30:00 PM. Roll call, Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mrs. Dean?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Osowski?
Here.
The chair is here. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda of the July 7th, 2025? As per usual, please place all cell phones on the table. Okay. I need a motion to adopt the agenda of the July 7th, 2025 organizational meeting as presented slash amended. Ms. Miller?
To the chair. Would I be able to amend the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. How would you like to amend it?
To include a motion to suspend the bylaws for one meeting?
Okay. So, there is a motion to amend the agenda to suspend the bylaws to allow sitting officers to stay in their positions for one meeting. So, we will make that item four. That will require a roll call vote. And it will require a super majority. I'm just writing it down. All right. So, it is moved by Ms. Miller to amend the agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Osowski. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Ms. Martin?
Um, I don't understand.
So, the motion is to amend, to include an act, um, a motion to allow board members, officers, who have been in position longer than three years or more, to be eligible to remain in that position, which would include myself and Ms. Miller.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Is there a reason for that?
You would have to ask Ms. Miller that.
Uh, well, when I met with the lawyers, um, he was telling me a lot of things about, uh, that if your new president, blah, 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 you'll have to answer all the questions. You may have to miss work to go to court, da, 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 et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know too much about the lawsuit. I know that President Pride Moore due, and she was here in the beginning when it all started, and she has all the paperwork and things of that nature. So, that's why I made the motion, because of the last meeting that I had with the lawyers, if you want to know.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Didn't we already do this last year?
We did do it last year. At this point, um, we're just amending the agenda. We're not voting on the motion. We need to just either amend the agenda or go with the agenda as presented. So, we need to have discussion around the amendment. Um, discussion as to why we are amending, why we're suspending the bylaws, I would believe needs to come at that point. But, yes, we did do it last year. Because at that time, I was approached, given the turmoil in the district last year at this time, I was approached by several people and asked to stay because they felt like consistent leadership was important. I have been approached again and asked to stay in the position for the same reason. I will say what I have said all along. I will do what is the will of the board and what is best for this district ultimately. So, the motion is to amend the agenda. Is there any further discussion regarding that? Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So, five to two, motion carries. Okay. So, there, we will now make item four. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education suspend the bylaws for the purpose of this meeting, allowing any officer who has been in position for at least three years or more to be eligible for the same position? I need a motion before we come up.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Miller, supported by Mr. Osowski. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
We're voting to suspend the bylaws for this current meeting so we can vote on what we amend.
All we amended was the agenda. We're suspending, we're voting to suspend the bylaws so that if someone chooses to nominate myself for president, that can happen, or Ms. Miller for vice president, because she's at three years as well. That can happen. It's just to allow a broader choice of who the future officers are. That's the, that's the reason to suspend the bylaws, because the bylaw says three years, three consecutive years.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
So, if we've already put the bylaws into effect, why are we changing them?
We're not. We're suspending them temporarily for the purpose of this meeting.
Right. So, why are we changing them?
We're not changing the bylaws. We are temporarily suspending.
It says three years.
Yes.
Why are we changing them?
We are not changing it. We are suspending the bylaw for the purpose of this meeting. To change a bylaw requires a much bigger action.
We, at this rate, we have to just, just suspend the bylaws in a minute. And we're not going to abide by our own bylaws.
But our bylaws allow us to suspend the bylaws for one meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
So.
Absolutely.
It's not for one meeting. It's for a year.
No. It's for one meeting, allowing me to be renominated, or Ms. Miller to be renominated.
Which means for a year.
No. The bylaw is suspended for the purpose of this meeting. The election takes place for a year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This will require five of seven. Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Johnson comes before Martin.
Oh.
Because I'll go in alphabetical order. Uh, because you're next, Mrs. Martin. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
And the chair will vote yes. Okay. So, now we will go, item four is now item five, election officers. Okay. Before we go forward with this, I do want to tell you that I did read Robert's Rules because I anticipated the possibility of more than one nomination for these seats. So, in that instance, we have a couple of things we can do. We can roll call vote it, where you speak the name of the person that you want to hold that position. We can ballot vote it, and they're passed down, and we'll have Jackie read them. Or we can yes, no vote it. Those are our options, and whatever the will of this board is, if you're comfortable, if you're okay with saying somebody's name, great. If you're not, we can, we can write it down. It's entirely up to you. And I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. All right. Item A, nomination of president.
I nominate you, uh, Evelyn Pride Moore.
Okay. It is moved by Ms. Miller to nominate myself as president. I need support.
Support. I'm sorry. I was writing.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. Yes, I will accept. Are there any further nominations for the seat of president? All right. Hearing none. I'm sorry, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
You nominate yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Is there support?
None.
Okay. Hold on. I'm assuming that you will accept the nominations since you made it. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Yes. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the nominations for the office of, office of president?
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Osowski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. How would you like to do it? Would you like to do an audible roll call, or would you like to do a ballot roll call?
Ballot.
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, I think last year, we had, you had a reason why you just wanted.
You were correct. We did. Let's, we'll take that moment and do that. And I will allow you to go first.
Oh, my chair. I'm all for a new chair.
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
How are we going to do that?
Um, we will write it, just write down the name of the person that you want, and then we'll pass them down to check.
It can be secret.
It can be secret.
It can't be secret.
It will be read out loud. You don't have to speak it out loud. I looked this up in, in Robert's Rules. You do not have to say who you want to be president in this case. I looked this up today. If you're not comfortable saying out.
You do, or you have to do. But I'm telling you, it can't be a secret ballot.
Okay. We'll roll call it. That's fine. That's fine. All right. We'll speak to why. Um, I'll say what I've said always before. I am, um, I've been honored to be the president of this board, even in the hard times. Um, I am the most tenured member of this board. I've been here longer than anybody else. And my heart is completely with this district. I will say however, not however, I will follow the will of this board. I will support whomever the next president is, if it is not me, to the fullest extent of my abilities. And ultimately, all I've ever wanted is what's right for this district. And I do not believe that anything else. Well, no. I, I mean, that's, everybody here knows my heart and knows my desire. Mrs. Martin?
I echo what Ms. Pride Moore just stated, um, as far as it relates to wanting to do what's best for this district and for the students and for everyone that's involved as a board member. And I also would like to add that I think that it's, it's fair to give people a new opportunity who has not sat in the role. Because, yes, even though Ms. Pride Moore has, she has been on this board for a long time, but how can someone else learn how to be a president of the board, how to be a vice president, president, or any other officer if we're not given that opportunity? At this point, we may continue to go down this path because in fact, there's going to always be, not always, hopefully not, it's, there may be matters that a new president may not, has charted before, like waters, none of us has ever charted before. But we all need that experience. And if you want that experience, uh, opportunity to have that experience. And then too, um, I think that, um, the relationship, uh, that, that, as a board president, I don't personally feel like, um, a relationship has been formed with each and every person, with each and every decision along the way. Sometimes things happen we don't know about, things occur, we kind of left in the dark. I feel that we kind of just need a new direction, a new voice, a new opportunity to have someone act as president, to, um, that's open to new voices and, um, and is willing to, uh, listen to all the members of the board.
I'm just going to back you up and say, you did this last year. You insulted me last year. I chose not to insult you. And you chose to insult me by saying that I don't listen to the rest of the board. And that really bothers me. Any board member is able to pick up the phone and call me. I reveal everything that I am allowed to reveal early. And I have tried my best to have relationships with those people who are interested in fostering relationships with me.
I think that, um, that, I mean, when it comes down to how we do our agendas, I think that that are some, some areas that may need some improvement. I think that, um, we, uh, it just needs to be a, a new direction for the board.
Thank you.
Chair?
Mr. Bailey?
I'm stupefied. Law says we're the governing board for the school district. You know, we rubber stamp left and right. We've talked about doing our own evaluations, how we can improve. What, what's the term that they use?
You mean board self-evaluation?
That's it. Yeah. How many years have we discussed it? It hasn't been the case. You and Mr. Osowski specifically are of the indoctrination that our own employee, only employee is the superintendent. It's just like 1984, two plus two is equal to five.
Mr. Bailey?
We sit here and we say how much we love our kids, yet we continue to perpetuate the same. It, it can be better, but we lock it in either through not looking at other opportunities, or we lock it in in terms of the same people perpetuating this. And what amazes me is my fellow associates can't see that. They've got the same responsibility under the law, and yet they perpetuate this over and over again. There's no opportunity for leadership. The only leadership that's occurring is you. If you don't attend, then we cancel meetings. How in the hell, what's wrong with Ms. Miller?
I, I have, I have never missed a meeting as board president. When we have canceled meetings, it has not been at my request. It has been at request of other people. I have never, in 13 years, as a matter of fact, in 13 years, I've probably missed fewer than five meetings. And that includes workshops. I am dedicated to being here, but since being board president. We didn't cancel a meeting because I couldn't be here.
So, the meeting could have continued on.
I have not ever personally requested for a meeting to be canceled because of my not being able to be here. Never.
I'm not splitting hairs on that, whether you requested or not. The point is, is the meeting was suspended.
Well, if Mr. Witt requests that we change a meeting.
Ms. Miller conducted the meeting.
Now, if our superintendent can't be at a meeting, and he has asked me to change a meeting, I am going to honor that request. That has nothing to do with whether or not I can be at this meeting. Never has this meeting, a meeting been canceled because I couldn't be here. Never. And you'd have the nerve to sit here and talk about being indoctrinated. I am a well-trained board member. I do know that my only employee is Mr. Witt. It is not my only job.
Where is it written?
In, like, what, CBA 101.
It's not written anywhere.
All right. It's beside the point. It's beside the point. I'm, Mr. Osowski and I are not indoctrinated. He is our only employee. We do have sworn jobs other than hiring and firing, like just delivering a balanced budget. We are required by law to uphold that. I know my job, and I know, my, I know my job as a board member, period. Whether I'm president or trustee, I know my job as a board member. And by the way, you obviously don't. Because our jobs as a board members are not, we also shouldn't be making this board look bad. And to threaten to go to the press over accounting issues and to sue your fellow board members certainly doesn't bring any dignity to that seat that you sat in. And you talk about how you care about the kids of this district? You don't have any skin in the gate. I have granddaughters who have to grow up and come to these schools, and I want them to be the best damn schools they can have. By the way, you don't have to keep your cool to be president, as you can see. This will require a roll call vote. We will go down the roll. You will name the person that you choose to vote for as president. Mr. Bailey?
Martin.
Mrs. Dean? Mrs. Johnson?
Pride Moore.
Mrs. Martin?
Martin.
Ms. Miller?
Pride Moore.
Mr. Osowski? The chair votes Pride Moore. That is five to two. This motion carries with the election of Pride Moore in the presidency. I'm going to take a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to stay in the vice presidency? Okay. Can I get a motion for the position of vice president?
So moved.
I, I need, I need a name.
Martin Miller.
Miller? Okay. It's moved by Ms. Johnson, that Ms. Miller be nominated for vice president. Is there support? I need support. I'll second it. Okay. And do you accept, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Are there any further nominations for the position of vice president? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the nominations for the position of vice president?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Osowski. All in favor, say yes? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Me.
Me.
Five to two. Motion carries. I need a roll call vote relative to the, Ms. Miller, to the position.
Can I just ask you?
Yes.
I'm just making sure.
Mm-hmm.
You guys were saying no to closing the nomination?
I'm saying no to Ms. Moore head vice president.
Okay. Well, the motion that was on the table was close nominations for the office of the vice president. No, Sean, just clarifying.
Thank you.
So, are you okay with closing the nominations?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, are you okay with closing the nominations?
I am.
I'm sorry?
I am.
Okay. So, we're good. All right. All right. Roll call vote relative to Ms. Miller as vice president. Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries. All right. Can I get a motion for board secretary? That's currently Mrs. Martin. Miss, Mrs. Martin, would you like to remain as board secretary?
No.
Okay. I need a, I need a board secretary.
Did you want to be secretary?
Somebody who wants to be board secretary. It's super easy. I'll nominate Mr. Osowski.
Nominate Ms. Johnson.
Oh, Ms. Johnson? Okay. We have a nomination from Ms. Miller to nominate Mrs. Johnson, supported by Mr. Osowski. Ms. Johnson, do you accept?
Yes.
It's easy. It's probably the easiest.
I'm favoring not easy.
It's the easiest job here. Are there any further nominations to the position of secretary? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller, seconded by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Roll call vote relative to Mrs. Johnson as board secretary. Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mrs. Dean?
He did say no.
Yes.
He did say no. Yeah. Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Mrs. Dean, you're our current treasurer, correct?
I am.
All right. We just, because I forget. I need a motion, uh, can I get a motion for the position of treasurer?
Nominate Lorna Dean.
Okay. Ms. Miller has nominated Mrs. Dean. Is there support?
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Osowski. Mrs. Dean, do you accept?
Accept.
Thank you. She accepts. Um, is there any further nominations for the position of treasurer? All right. Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the nominations for the office of treasurer?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller, seconded by Mr. Osowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This is a roll call vote regarding to Mrs. Dean as the nomination for treasurer. Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mrs. Dean? I know, it always feels weird, right? Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries, six to one. All right. Item, I think, six now. This is now item six. Consent, consent items from the business services offices. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, at the recommendation of Maria Gistinger, interim chief financial officer, and Jason Witt, superintendent, approve the consent agenda items as presented and amended below? Item A, approve JP Morgan Chase, M I L A F, Huntington Bank, and U M B Financial Corporation as the four designated depositories of the general operating and other funds for the 2025-2026 school year. B, authorize the board treasurer, superintendent, and interim chief financial officer or designee as signatories on bank accounts at JP Morgan Chase. C, designate to the superintendent or designate the responsibility of posting public notices of all meetings of the Board of Education. D, appoint the superintendent or designate as the Freedom of Information Act coordinator for Redford Union Schools.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries. Action items. Um, item A, special consideration, non-consent agenda action items. Board of Education, regular meetings and workshops scheduled July 2025 to July 2026. Uh, I hope everybody got a chance to take a look at them. Um, can I get a motion that the Board of Education approve the regular meeting and workshop schedule for the period of July 2025 through July 2026 as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Please question.
Yes. Mrs. Martin?
Um, I noticed that we have talked about in the past of at least having some board, some, at least the board workshops at a different location to try to, you know, encourage public to come out. And I was wondering if that's possible, does, or have, does, can we change it? We start to have it here to somewhere else? I know Pride Moore, we spoke about that at, at like a few times.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I, I absolutely encourage that. I think especially since we've done all this one, you know, we talked about this last year. We've done all this wonderful bond work. It doesn't, the workshops don't have to be here. Um, I, it's a great opportunity to get people out. It's a great opportunity to get people out, and we might even, like, we would want to say, the Board, like, we could probably want to organize a meet and greet, and then a board workshop. Maybe we could do it that way. Yeah, I, I love that idea. It wouldn't necessarily change the dates, it would just change location.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, I'll, remind me, 'cause I'll forget. And, and Jackie, make a note of that for me, 'cause, you know, we'll be in January, and I'll be like, oh, yeah, we were gonna do that, weren't we? Especially like, as the school year gets rolling, maybe like October.
Especially while, you know, while the weather is kind of before the snow hit.
Yeah, exactly, we can get some people out, September, October, that's, that'd be really great. I like that idea. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. There were no items, remove them from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving, everybody, like, you see how fast they give me that motion, right? Moved by Mr. Osowski, seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:01. And we will move on to the next one in just a few minutes.